Commissioners, are there any questions about any items on the agenda for our briefing meeting today? And is there any other topic that anyone would like to have some discussion about at the briefing meeting today that's not already on the published agenda? All right, then, this will be our, this will be our, we'll follow this agenda for the meeting. Are there any questions about any items on the agenda for this evening? Very good. Then, let's move on to the first staff update, and that's on the COVID response, and Stacy Saunders will, is here to help us out with this item.
Thanks for having me. Today, we are going to do our COVID update, and just, just some reminders that we'll go over the current COVID situation. We'll talk about our vaccine rollout, and then what's on the horizon. I did want to start first with our EpiCurve, and give some updates around that we, there have been 23,001 total cases of COVID-19 since the pandemic started. 351 Buncombe County neighbors have died related to COVID-19. And while the pace at which the cases are increasing has slowed, and I'll talk a little bit more about that slightly in the last two weeks, we are currently seeing levels similar to the middle of January, when we had case rates that were close to 400 per 100,000 per week. So the current incidence is about 366 cases per 100,000 per week. This has, is virtually unchanged from last week, where it was 365. So we are seeing just a slight slowing in the increase in cases. On average, about 129 new cases per day enter our public health workflow. This is an increase from about 120 last week. And so there is a slight slowing in the rate of increase in cases, which has me hopeful, but also very cautious, because cases do remain very high at this point. Percent positivity remains high as well, but has remained below 10% for the last two weeks. The percent positivity has stabilized in the mid-nine percents, with today's value being 9.6%. Again, while stable for the last couple of weeks, this is a far cry from levels just in July that were well below the desired 5%. You might remember at that time, we were seeing levels as low as 2%. The highest rates of infection remain in our 25- to 49-year-old group. However, cases in our school age population has increased over the last couple of weeks as the school year has begun. And on this particular slide, you'll notice that the green at the bottom is the 0 to 17, so that's our school age group. And they're showing a larger proportion of cases than they have in the past. And just of reference, our older populations are the very top two, and you can see showing less proportion than they have in the past. And they're our group with the highest vaccination rate. In terms of regional hospitalizations, we continue to see high levels of hospital utilization. And as I've said several times, following a time of rapid case increases, we will then see an increase in hospitalizations within a few weeks. Beginning in mid-July, we saw a rapid increase in new cases coming in, which was then followed by a significant increase in hospitalizations. Unfortunately, high levels of cases also often lead to high levels of hospitalizations, which in turn typically means an increase in deaths as well. And while not at the levels we saw in January, where our deaths were at 12 per 100,000 per week, the rate of death has increased to 3.1 per 100,000 per week, from 1.1 just last week. Hospitalizations are a lagging indicator, and with case levels still really high, it is expected that we will see a high level of hospitalizations well until, into September. Dr. Hathaway is with us today, and will be talking more in depth about that current hospital system COVID-19 situation when I'm, completed the vaccine pieces. So before moving on to vaccination rates, our weekly metrics have been updated, and that's what you see in front of you now. As I said, cases continue to be high. This indicator remains red, indicating high transmission. The percent positivity, while stable, far exceeds the desired state of less than 5% and remains in the orange. As mentioned earlier, as hospitalization increases, it is likely that additional deaths will be experienced, and our death rate has increased now to 3.1 per 100,000 per week, and then now is in red. Hospitalizations continue to increase from last week and remain high, stretching the capacity of our hospitals. And then our vaccination rates are at the bottom, but I'll talk more about vaccination in depth now. One of our greatest tools to help control and manage COVID-19 is vaccination. Vaccination is not only a tool to help control COVID-19, it is our greatest tool in reducing severe illness, hospitalizations, and death amongst our population. This slide shows the very wide gap of risk between the vaccinated and the unvaccinated regarding illness. That orange-looking line is the vaccinated, the blue or darker line is the unvaccinated. The unvaccinated have a risk of getting COVID-19 that is four times that of their vaccinated Additionally, the unvaccinated have a risk of COVID-19-related death that is 15 times that of their vaccinated counterparts. And I just want to repeat that, 15 times more likely to die if unvaccinated. So again, this is why vaccination is so very important. Currently, about 63% of our total population is partially vaccinated, and just about 60% of our total population is fully vaccinated. This leaves us still a large proportion of the population not vaccinated and at higher risk for illness, which then in turn is higher risk for hospitalization and death. In the recent weeks, we have seen a slight uptick in vaccination administration across the county and also in our clinics. Two weeks ago, when I talked to you all, I was excited to see the first glimpse of an upward swing in vaccination. And standing here today, it appears that that has leveled off just a bit. And though our clinic saw a very large increase last week, that I'll talk more about in a little bit, but I am hopeful that we'll see another upswing as vaccination data from last week is entered and added as well. Vaccination is, as I've said, one of our greatest tools, and in this time of very high transmission, it will take vaccination and a layered approach to succeed in controlling and managing COVID-19, as we've done here. So increasing our vaccination rates coupled with our countywide face covering requirement, and all of us remembering to also put some space between us and others and limit our interactions, we can begin to push down COVID-19. I did want to talk a bit about our different vaccine operations. Buncombe County HHS has administered over 98,900 total vaccine doses since December. We continue to offer vaccinations at the fixed site, which is located at 40 Cox Avenue, where the Health Department is, and it's being well utilized weekly. And continue to support vaccine outreach events throughout the area, including local schools, community centers, homeless services, food pantries. This week, I believe, we're at work sites. And in addition to the community outreach, Buncombe County HHS provides and has provided at-home or homebound vaccination services. In the beginning, in partnership with Meals on Wheels and Mission Care Partners for the homebound, at-home or homebound vaccination services are available through Buncombe County HHS and throughout the state. If you're, if you're listening to us and live in another county, you can follow the website on this slide to learn more. And individuals who are interested in this in Buncombe County can visit the website or give us a call at 828-419-0095. And additionally, you've heard me talk about the FEMA Vaccine Resource. It has been very successful in providing over 600 doses of vaccine in its first run during, in our region. And currently, the FEMA team is deployed to another region in the state, but will return, I believe, to our area in October. I did want to spend a moment talking about the Buncombe County HHS vaccine teams and other community partners and vaccine providers, and the efforts they've put into equitable distribution of vaccine. The area vaccine providers meet regularly. That includes the Public, the Public Health Department Vaccine Operations, FQHCs, Community Health Centers, our pharmacies, many other vaccine providers. To create plans and provide vaccine to needed areas. And as a result of this continued partnership between providers with a focus on equity, we have reached many vulnerable areas by sharing information and spreading vaccination opportunities amongst all the partners. This map, albeit just a bit busy, displays census tracts by social vulnerability and vaccination rates. I do apologize that the county lines don't show up quite as well, that's hence the black box, to give you an idea of where to focus. Blue and shades of maroon and purple are favorable. In particular, the purple shades indicate areas of high social vulnerability and moderate or high vaccination rates, whereas the blue indicates low social vulnerability and moderate or high vaccination rates. Shades of cherry red, which you can see in, outside of the black box and to the east of us and to the far west, shades of cherry red indicate high social vulnerability and lower vaccination rates. So at this time, we have no areas of bright cherry red, and this is in part because of the hard work of all those vaccine providers in Buncombe. Like I said, that include not just your Health Department, but community health centers, Mayhec pharmacies, state vendors, many vaccine providers, who are all talking to each other, collaborating, sharing information, and dividing the vaccine load. There is still work to do, particularly in some of our areas that have high social vulnerability and, and are have, are have moderate vaccination rates, moving them into high vaccination rates. To close out the vaccine update, we have seen a really good response to the Department of Health and Human Services Summer Incentive Program. Prior to the program, we were administering less than 200 doses per week, but since the program began, we are averaging 400 doses per week. And last week was a banner week, where almost 550 doses were administered, and almost 310 of those were first doses. So that was incredible to see this morning, when I, when the numbers were pulled. Since the program started on August 4th, over 860 individuals have received $100 for receiving their first dose, and almost 120 individuals have received $25 for bringing someone to their first dose. Department of Health and Human Services has allowed an extension of the program until September 13th, while supplies last. So we encourage eligible individuals who have not received their vaccine yet and are interested in this incentive program to come see us, and come see us soon, before the program expires or before our cards run out. And just a reminder that to be eligible for the $100, an individual must be 18 years or older and be getting their first dose. And to receive the $25, an individual must be 18 years and up, and transporting an individual who is getting their first dose. So what's on the horizon and next steps? Given the stabilization of our percent positivity and the slower rise in cases, there are no new recommendations at this time, but we will look to review and evaluate the need to remove or extend the face covering requirement at the September 21st meeting, and any other recommendations should the COVID-19 landscape change in that time. Buncombe County HHS Public Health continues to provide consultation to our local schools. Now that school is in session, both public schools and charters did implement universal masking K through 12, and adopted many, if not all, of the recommendations listed in the Strong Schools Toolkit regarding social distancing, ventilation, and many other things. In addition to that, Buncombe County HHS Public Health, in addition to our current vaccination efforts at the fixed and outreach sites, we are actively planning for anticipated boosters for the general public, not to be confused with the third additional dose for those who are immunocompromised, but the boosters for the general public. And while there is still no official word and no official guidance that has been given, we are planning now in order to best meet the needs of the population. This plan includes operations specifically for boosters, as well as maintaining fixed site operations for those still needing first and second doses. So more details to come on, on that, as the nuances to that planning are heavily dependent on the timing of the official announcement and the criteria of eligibility. But I did want to say, just a reminder, for those who are immunocompromised, the CDC recently recommended a third additional dose for those who are moderately to severely immunocompromised. Those who received Moderna or Pfizer and are moderately or severely immunocompromised can receive an additional dose of vaccine in order to better protect themselves. Individuals must self-atest that they qualify for the third additional dose by having a condition or taking a medication that causes them to be moderately to severely immunocompromised. Buncombe County HHS can administer those doses at our walk-in clinic at 40 Cox and at mobile outreach events. Additional doses can be secured at any vaccine provider, and individuals do not need to go back to where they got their original doses to receive their third additional dose, should they be eligible to get one. And just a reminder that the recommendation does not include individuals who receive the J&amp;J vaccine at this time. So before turning it over to Dr. Hathaway, I wanted to also remind everyone that if you are experiencing symptoms of COVID-19, please get tested and isolate right away while you wait for your results. If you have not received your vaccine, now is the time. Case numbers are high, transmission remains high, your risk of illness, hospitalization, and even death is far greater if you are unvaccinated. Don't take that chance with your health. Please let, please don't let COVID-19 take control of you. And I'll, I'll end with vax up and mask up. It is this layered approach right now that we have in Buncombe County that will help us control and manage COVID-19 and reduce your risks for spreading and becoming infected with COVID-19. So now, I'll invite Dr. Hathaway to the podium to give his update regarding the hospital situation.
I think there might be a couple of questions before Dr. Hathaway comes up. That's okay, Stacy. Jasmine, do you have a question?
Yeah, just a couple. Thank you so much, Stacy, and thank you to the staff for the continued really tremendous efforts underway. I just had a couple of questions and then a couple of things I wanted to put on the table for discussion. Can you just talk with us about what your thoughts are, given what you're seeing around rising childhood cases, and, and what level of concern?
Yeah, thanks for the question. So for the last couple of weeks, we have seen the proportion of those who are 18, younger than 18, that case rate go up. Probably not unexpected, given that school was coming back in. Many of those first waves, though, were probably exposures outside of the classroom. We have two public school systems that have universally decided to mask K through 12, which is one of the best ways that we're going to stop the spread. And they're adhering to, if not all, many of the, of the recommendations that are in the Strong Schools Toolkit. So I do expect that we will continue to see more, you know, those cases in, in children. Many of those, though, the exposure is likely to be outside of the classroom and as they're coming back into the classroom. So the big thing to remember for families and caregivers is that when outside of the classroom, and that means when you're in extracurricular activities, sports, out with your family, in your neighborhood, to continue to practice distancing, masking if you're going to be indoors, and if your child is eligible for vaccine, to get them vaccinated if they're not already. Within the school setting, they're taking very many precautions with the social distancing, the masking, the way that they're setting up classrooms, the way that they're ventilating classrooms, and taking, you know, things outside so that folks can be spaced out and better ventilation. But we, we likely will see that those cases coming in.
Okay, thank you for that. In terms of the vaccination efforts, if the state funding is set to expire on the 13th, can we authorize or approve something so that local funding could step in there and ensure the continuity of that incentive program?
I don't know that I can answer that.
That would be a local funding? So yes, you can do a budget amendment to move some of the contingency or some fund balance to a program that, that we could run and do the same thing that they're doing.
It couldn't be used off the 1 million we've authorized?
I knew the state got special authorization to use ARFA money or CARES money to do that, so we would have to look into see if we could use that money.
Okay. Well, I think, given, so...
That's kind of the, it was more, right? Like, you would double, double check and make sure that...
We would need to double check the actual pain of the incentive to an individual.
Is there any way we can make that happen so that the service is not interrupted on the 13th?
I'll just add that, what, with this extension till September 13th, actively talking to the state too about what the future of the program is. So as I learn more details, I'll be happy to share them.
I'd just like to make sure we're on our toes on this. It seems like it's a program that's working at a time when we need to spur people getting a vaccine, and would hate to see that interrupted. So we won't meet again until the 21st unless we call a special meeting. So if there's action we need to take, would we need to add that as an agenda item this evening?
You would. And you can make it contingent on whether or not we could do that, but I will try to get some answers between now and 5:00.
Okay. And I guess the question for board members to mull over is whether we have the unanimous support to add that as an agenda item. The final thing I'd love to just ask is, you know, you all are just doing tremendous work through a lot of different strategies, and it's obviously working to spur a lot of people to get vaccines. And then we know there's another group of people in our community who, under the right conditions, will get vaccinated, but they haven't, that hasn't happened yet. And would, we've had a lot of commission-level discussion in the past week, and would love to hear from staff at our next meeting some ideas about what it would look like to stand up a, say, month-long campaign, for instance, to really push to increase the vaccination numbers during this critical period, where there's a sort of concentrated effort with these strategies, where it's blasted across sort of every media channel that exists, outreach to folks. It's not, it's building on what you all have been doing, but in a way, I think, where, especially with people experiencing such fatigue around these issues, it's easy to tune out, and just trying to really do a big push so that we are doing everything we can to maximize adult vaccinations, and then hopefully the, the children's one will be available sooner rather than later, and we can shift our focus there. But I would love to just hear staff thoughts on what feels feasible there, and, you know, I know there's some funding that's been allocated at this point. I'm, I would like, I would be open discussions about whether there's additional funding needs that arise related to that. But I think in this period, especially as we see concerning things happen, like the pediatric cases go up, we're hearing, I thought, you know, very sad stories about people who are dying related to COVID right now, is just everything we can be doing to sort of put our foot on the gas around increasing vaccination rates and making sure that, you know, everyone who's willing to get in a shot in their arm is, you know, we're doing everything we can to reach those folks. So I would love to hear staff ideas about that at our next meeting.
Great.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely. Next time we meet, particularly around some focus with the 18 to 24 and 25 to 49-year-olds, we'll, we'll bring back some communications, media, outreach types of ideas.
And two specific things I'd add, sorry, Ronnie. I guess two specific things on my mind would be, I don't know that I've read about a incentive that exists anywhere for 12 to 18-year-old persons, and I don't know if you've, if you've heard of those types of examples, and would love to consider some of those perhaps at our next meeting.
I'm sorry, is that communications and messaging around 12 to 18-year-olds?
No, incentives. Like, for example, the gift cards is only for 18-year-olds.
Correct.
And, you know, one of our, I think it's 50% of 12 to 18-year-olds have been vaccinated. So I'd love to think, I'd love for all of us to think of incentives for our younger...
What was that percentage?
I think it's 50% is what that slide said.
Okay.
49, 50? It's broken up, so I can't, can't do that math. But, um, what was my other thought? Yeah, in the past, Stacy, you've mentioned that you've had success at, at schools, doing school outreach. I, I'd love to hear if that's still the case. I also know there's, you know, several dozen schools within the boundaries of Buncombe County, and so I guess I'd love to hear if you would agree, if you would think it was, it would be helpful. I'd love to hear what you think you'd need from us in terms of resources to perhaps scale that up, to, to double or triple that effort, to kind of coincide with some of what Jasmine is, is considering, so.
Yeah, so thanks for that. We have had a lot of success in partnering with schools, particularly in the summer, trying to get many of the student athletes who were eligible vaccinated, plus their families. And we had quite a bit of success. Sometimes they were our most visited, and we administered the most vaccines at those, because it's, it's a familiar space, it's a place that folks trust, it's a, it's usually a place that they know how to navigate, and faces they're used to seeing, because our school partners were often there with us. And so as we think about particularly those who are less than 12 being eligible at some point, we are thinking through, like, how do we partner with our schools and be as successful during that time as we were in the summer? So planning already, trying to think through that. With school just going back in session, we've sort of backed off just a little bit.
Yeah.
Let them get used to the school year, and then reengage about further vaccine outreach.
Stacy, talking about schools, I'd like, are you through? I'm sorry. I didn't want to hear. I'd like to piggyback what Parker was talking about, but we hear a lot about masking in the Buncombe County schools, Asheville City schools. We know what's going on with the public schools, but I don't hear a lot about the private schools and the charter schools in the county. I mean, what is going on there? Do we have the same push with them that we have with the public schools?
Thanks for the question. So it's my understanding that the charter schools have followed suit with the public schools and have the universal K through 12 masking, and have adopted many of the recommendations in the Strong Schools Toolkit. Private schools are different, and I don't have the breakdown as to which are requiring and which don't, but I'll be glad to get that for you and share it. So the private schools may or may not be doing the masking, but it doesn't, the public and the charter schools are, and masking is one of, one of those layered approaches, particularly a very important approach for children who are less than 12 who cannot be vaccinated.
Right.
So I think everyone in public health was really pleased when both of our public schools decided to do universal masking, because it does allow, it does reduce the risk so that children can stay in a, in a learning environment that is healthy and safe. And we continually have meetings with our school systems, and even charter schools and, and private schools too, as needed, to talk through recommendations, to, you know, to help them figure out ways, to help, to help them figure out ways to implement some of the recommendations that, that might find challenging, or just to talk through new guidance. So we're continually talking with our school systems.
Thanks.
Stacy, one of the questions that I've continued to hear recently is coming from larger employers, and I think there just seems to be a lot of confusion and misinterpretation of guidance, particularly around isolation and quarantining. And I know a lot of those folks tune into these briefings to catch the, the updated information. And for those folks who are, who have tuned in, who are asking those questions, can you just give a quick reminder to that process of someone has been exposed in, in a conference room, what the, what the guidelines are for isolation and quarantining?
Great.
I know that's really basic, but I'm getting a lot of it.
I will try my best to, to do sort of a, sort of one-layer type. But if you were exposed to someone who is a positive case, the quarantine criteria is going to be based on your vaccination status at this time. So if you are exposed and you're unvaccinated, your quarantine is usually 14 days. So if you are exposed and you're unvaccinated, your quarantine is usually 14 days. There are options for a lesser quarantine, but that means that you have to be asymptomatic, don't have any, you know, through that time period, not having any symptoms. And so there are, there are criteria that get you a lesser one. If you are vaccinated and exposed to someone who is positive, there is, the CDC guidance is no longer that you have to quarantine, but you do still have to self-monitor for symptoms. And we do recommend that three to five days after the last exposure, you get tested. And so that's the pretty basic one. It goes into, that criteria gets pretty weedy if you're unvaccinated and trying for a lesser quarantine, but that's, that's the basic piece of it.
Thank you, I really appreciate it.
Just a couple kind of follow-up questions. You know, in terms of the sort of suggestions Jasmine was making, I think part of what we're, we're interested in is, you know, we do have funding set aside from ARPA. Again, got to check all the eligibility stuff, but whether it's that fund, those funds or others, I mean, of course, we just, you know, we want to do anything we can to help continue to get the vaccination numbers up. So there's been all this work done, continuing work. So it seems like one of the questions that folks are asking themselves is like, would there be some, maybe some new tactics or if there were some additional resources that we were willing to kind of invest into this effort? Any new things that we might be able to kind of layer in on top of what we're already doing to potentially reach more people and try to move some more people? Is it, is it correct that, by the fact that we, we know who's been vaccinated in Buncombe County, right, for this, that, like, we know who those folks are, I'm saying this, but it's really a question, we also kind of know who hasn't been vaccinated yet, right? Like, we actually know who those people are in the community. So if we were going to invest some additional resources in community outreach and education, would it be possible, and there were some funds to go along with it, so in addition to the, the free media resources that the county's used, our website, our partners in the media, things like that, like, if there are different events going on in the community for vaccination, you know, might there be opportunities to do sort of targeted outreach to these folks who we know haven't gotten vaccinated yet, but perhaps, you know, there's reason to believe, you know, very well, you know, haven't completely closed their mind to it and might very well be willing to, to do it under the right circumstances and if they're perhaps getting more information about here are the easy, really convenient opportunities coming up to do so. So those are just kind of some of the ideas I hear folks kind of talking about that we, and it's not just public health, but I'm thinking, you know, can our, can the county's community engagement folks and everyone kind of think about if, if there were additional resources available, what, what might some promising strategies potentially look like?
And are you asking for an answer?
Thank you, that's one of the things we can look at and bring back next time because we need to study that. And I do want to say that staff was actually watching this, so they were able to respond and tell me that yes, we could use some of that contingency money.
Okay, great.
So I wouldn't need a budget amendment, we'll just need to get a plan from DHHS of how much money we'll need and we can use some of that million.
For the incentives?
Yes.
Great, so that can just be continuous?
Yes.
No further action required.
Right, and so if the state does sunset their program, then we can pick up immediately. And if the state continues, then we would hold off.
And on that point in particular, I'm just kind of curious, Stacy, to what extent you're, if we have, I don't know if there's any research on this or if it's more maybe just sort of anecdotal observations or a sense from the staff who've worked on it, like, how much that, that, that particular incentive has helped move people to do it? Is the sense that like, it has moved people or the folks, or is it more like the people who did it were happy to get the bonus, were that like, I don't know, any way to quantify that? I mean, since I'm, I'm certainly happy to support it or maybe even expand it depending on, is it a, is it an impactful incentive in this process?
We think so. So we did see on average a twofold increase when the incentive program went into place. The state continues to monitor and evaluate it. I can ask if they have any new data around statewide, how it moved people. I can tell you anecdotally, yes, folks came in saying, is it too late to get one of those incentive cards? So we know that folks were coming specifically once they, once the dollar amount changed. That seemed to make a big difference. And that, we started in the program once the dollar amount changed to 100, but what I hear from folks across the state is that they were in the program longer when it was 25. They saw their numbers increase when it moved to 100. So there was this, I guess the threshold had been met where it made it much more motivating and enticing and more desirable to do. So we do know those things. I'll be glad to ask DHHS if they've got any new qualitative and quantitative data from their evaluation of the program from the time it started and after the dollar amount changed. But I do appreciate the recommendations about how to reach others. I'm thinking through my brain right now, particularly around messaging and communications, particularly for 18 to 24 and then 24 to 49, because those tend to be our workforce, also tend to be our rates of higher infection and how to motivate and how to reach those folks in innovative and creative ways.
What else do you hear anecdotally about why people are showing up now?
It's still, one is the incentive card, two, still that someone they care about or someone who loves them told them it was time to get, get vaccinated. The increase in cases, that still is the, one of the drivers as well, that folks have said that when we had that summer, the beginning of the summer lull, that they thought they would be fine, that it was going to go away. And then as the Delta variant increased, they felt a bit more vulnerable. And those are typically the reasons folks are coming in.
Do you hear anyone talking about workplace-related policies or does that not rising up as a-
I have not had that rise up yet.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Stacy. And Dr. Hathaway, thanks for being here as well.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here as always, and it's a privilege to be able to update the community on what's happening in Mission Health System. First and foremost, I want to shout out a huge thanks. We have been in this for 18 months plus now, caring for patients in our community. A thanks to Stacy and her team at the Health Department who've been just fantastic partners to work with, Avril and the gang. It's, it's really been, it's one of my silver linings of the pandemic that we've developed closer relationships. It's a tragic shame that it's come at the cost of so much suffering to so many people, but we're thankful for that. We're especially thankful to the individuals throughout the community, to the commissioners here have shown as much dedication as any elected group towards fighting this. And it's really a partnership that I've grown to appreciate. I want to run through our numbers a little bit, and this is augmenting and sometimes repeating some of the information that Stacy presented to you. This is the running seven-day average in North Carolina as of today. You can see that there is a slight improvement in terms of the number of cases compared to 14 days ago, is down about 26%. And if you'll notice to the right of the slide on the red line, that the slope or the steepness of the curve is leveling off, that's a reason for optimism on my part, and I'll share some other similar looking graphs. I, I'm hesitant Stacy used the words cautiously optimistic. I'm worried that the opening of the schools and that the Labor Day weekend, I'm a huge football fan, and if you watched any of the football games, you'll notice there was nary a mask to be found. And that gives me great pause that this is not a trend that necessarily will be sustainable. But that being said, we're down about 26% in terms of the rate of the rise. This is HCA data that I'm sharing with you here that looks at three separate groups. One is all of HCA, that represents our 187 hospitals in multiple states from Alaska to Florida. We have a high concentration of hospitals in Texas and in Florida. And I think those of you who've followed this closely know that that's where the pandemic has really taken off with this most recent Delta surge. And I'm encouraged by the downward slope. We are seeing a decrease in numbers of hospitalizations across the board. The right-hand graph, I believe, is one of our Florida divisions, and you can see a downward slope there. And the bottom graph is a zeroed-in look at what we're seeing here in North Carolina. This represents the hospitalizations in our 18-county region. And you'll see that while we have not rounded the curve as they have in some of the other divisions, it does look to me that we're flat. I don't know if that's the beginning of a downward trend or not, but we're hopeful and we'll see what happens. This is a blown-up view of what's happening exactly at Mission Hospital as of this morning. Again, goes back to last March where we were, you know, anxiously awaiting the onslaught and unfortunately saw that with the peak in January. You'll note that the rate of the rise in this current surge that began right around July 4th was steep. We've had some ups and downs. I don't know if we're plateauing or not. And our ICU numbers in ventilated patients, ICU is in orange, and gray are the number of patients on ventilators, is really at a high for the pandemic at this point in time. I think it's really important to understand that 90 to 95% of all those who are hospitalized right now are unvaccinated. And so echoing the theme that you all have put forth, what we can do to get people vaccinated is, is critical and key. Short of that, masking is huge and that the patients in the hospital who are sick and who are dying are the unvaccinated, not the vaccinated. Vaccinated people can get infected, but the severity of the illness is dramatically reduced. The next three graphs will have the similar format, so I want to orient you to that initially so you can understand what we're looking at. These are our test results in our labs by age group. The youngest are represented by the blue at the lower half, orange is the 25 to 44-year age group, gray is 45 to 64 years of age, and then the oranges, those older than 65 years of age. And you can see that back in July, we were less than 10 cases a day diagnosed in our labs, and we have, you know, gone up dramatically in all age groups. And these are all tests in any of our facilities. You'll note that the biggest increases tend to be in those in the 0 to 24 and 25 to 44-year age group. Keep that visual image in mind because I'm going to break it down here in a moment, where you can see that this is the outpatient setting, all the ambulatory lab, emergency department and other labs. And again, it's that 64 and under that's risen, not the elderly group that has seen the rise. And then when you look exclusively at the inpatients, those who are hospitalized, it's a dramatic shift. So see this picture versus this picture? Cases are rising across all age groups, hospitalizations are predominantly in the 45-year-old group and older. So it's really, and these are, the vast majority of these who are hospitalized here, as I said previously, are in the unvaccinated category. We've gotten a lot of questions about our pediatric hospitalizations. We have not seen very many, just to be honest with you. I think the most that we had in the hospital at any given time was three. We're typically averaging one to two children who are hospitalized with COVID. The other question we've gotten a lot is, have we seen any deaths from, in our vaccinated population? We have not, to my knowledge, unless someone has misinformed me, but I tried to get that data and we have not seen a vaccinated patient die. It has happened in the country, but it has not happened here locally. So it's wildly protective for us. I have just two more slides I want to share that look closer at mortality so people can understand what the death curves have looked like. This is an EPI curve that shows deaths per day going back to the pandemic. The dates are plotted along the bottom axis, and each blue bar represents the number of deaths that occurred on that given day. Taller the bar, the more deaths, the closer the bars together, the more deaths that were day after day after day after day. So if you look in the January, which is in the middle section, and I apologize that the writing is so small, you'll see that we had up to five and even seven deaths at our peak on a given day in the hospital in that, in that previous, the third, third wave of that virus infection that we saw. We went for a number of months, if you look out towards the right-hand side of the curve, May and June and July where we saw one, two, three, four, maybe five or six deaths total in a two-month period. And then it's not as, it's not surprising to me nor to anyone, it shouldn't be surprising, as the cases increase, the hospitalizations increase, the deaths follow, and now we're beginning to, to look again like we did in January. Similar data just plotted in a different way. This represents cumulative deaths, so the denseness of the color together represents deaths day after day after day. You see in December through February, many deaths, many days, multiple deaths on a given day. We did very well as we had vaccines put into people, stretched out the number of days in between deaths, many days without deaths, and then boom, August 1st hits and we're on this fourth wave with the Delta variant and we see a rise. I don't think the slope of the curve or the denseness of the bars is much different now in this current wave than it was in December and January. I think it's important to remember that Stacy pointed out that overall, the death rate is lower. It was 12 per 100,000 in January, I think if that's right, and then four per 100,000 now, or a little bit less than four. So that's encouraging. I think that's representative of the fact that we're seeing many, many more cases, but the elderly people, we have over 80% vaccination in those who are most vulnerable, and that's really good news. And that should encourage everybody in the community to, to get that vaccine and whatever incentives we can help to, to provide will do. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Hathaway. Would you mind going back a couple of slides if you can? I appreciate you sharing this information. I think there's some, yes, that one. So this is just for Mission Hospital.
This is just Mission Hospital.
Okay, and it's, and I know we can't read all the detail, but just to help us interpret it, this is updated through September the 7th, right? I'm reading the headline now.
Yep, through yesterday.
Okay, great. I really appreciate you sharing, sharing that information. As you know, the information that's on the state dashboard, there's much bigger kind of delay in the reporting on that. So I appreciate you sharing this with us today so we can kind of get an updated, you know, get this updated information, especially in this context of, as the chart shows, that there has been this significant increase in unfortunately the number of folks who are dying of COVID in the hospital. So, so thank you for, thank you for sharing that. I appreciate you bringing it.
And I would think, just to elaborate on this a little bit, that, that I would expect, while the mortality rate has declined over time significantly in January and February and March of last year, if you remember, we saw tremendous numbers of deaths early on in New York City when health systems were overwhelmed. We didn't know how to treat it very well. I think we will be very similar to what we were for hospitalized patients in January. I think that death rate will be the same, but there'll be many, many more cases that never make it to the hospital. So we'll see hospital numbers which are the same, while I think overall mortality rates will be, be lower. Once you get to the hospital, it's a bad situation. And again, these are the unvaccinated.
Yes. And, and I, that all makes sense to me, but it is, it is also, I mean, those are alarming numbers though. I mean, you know, just because it's not quite as bad as December, January, I mean, December, January was so, was so bad. I've spent some time just kind of going back and looking at this over, you know, from time to time, and it's with about 350, 350 deaths in the county over the course of this whole pandemic, but they're not evenly spread, you know, that period.
Yeah.
When we've had these peaks, there's like a very high percentage of the deaths occurring in fairly small percentages of the overall timeframe. And we're in another one of those now. We don't know exactly how it'll play out. I hope, I hope you're, you're right that it's going to be leveling off and maybe we see more positive trends, but it is, it is, you know, I feel like we talk about this stuff so much and the, all the things that were being done, but in some ways I think it's like, when a lot of people start dying, I think it is kind of this wake-up call. Unfortunately, maybe one of the few things that kind of causes some people to be jolted into, you know, the stuff I was hearing about, you don't really get that sick and, you know, things like that, people start realizing that, that's not always true.
No, it's not true.
Very serious, and we really are, and these aren't all just, as you mentioned, it is, it does skew towards the older residents, but these are, the folks who are at Mission Hospital, it's not nursing home residents, it's people who are generally from a healthier and younger group who are getting very seriously ill.
That's absolutely right. The, the age demographic has shifted so that our hospitalized patients are far younger than they were early on. Again, that's reflected the fact that we vaccinated the elderly, and so now we're left with the others. And we've had, I think our youngest death for us was a 28-year-old person, and we tragically had the death of a woman who was pregnant and delivered prematurely and then died leaving the newborn baby without a mother and the two kids at home without a mother.
It's so sad.
So, you know, this is, it always has been serious, it's just reemphasized by the current surge. If, the, the death rate in the United States right now overall is about 1.62%, which means between one and two people out of every 100 who get the illness will die. And that's 10 times greater than influenza. We've had more deaths from COVID in this epidemic and pandemic than we have in 10 years' worth of flu deaths. So people who think that this is the flu, it's not the flu, it's, it's far worse than the flu. And the risk in the, in the school-age population is not that they'll die, but they will then transmit it to their mothers and fathers, aunts and uncles. aunts and uncles, grandpas and grandmas. And, and those are the ones we have to protect.
Great.
Dr. Hathaway, I appreciate you sharing the, the local death numbers. I think that's a great way to build trust within, within the community and the hospital. So thank you for being willing to share those most current numbers. You specifically mentioned the Fourth of July spike, and we're just coming back from Labor Day, and you, you know, you mentioned college football. We know there's a lot of folks out doing things. Can you, and maybe this is a Stacy question too, give us any type of idea of what we could specifically expect to see after another long holiday weekend?
So, so every holiday that we've had so far was followed actually a little bit earlier than I would have expected. You know, we say it takes about 10 to 14 days before we start seeing increases in hospitalizations, but it's, it's really seven to 10 days where we actually started to see the rise. So I suspect that we will see a rise. I think with the opening of schools, we'll see a rise in cases for sure, because there's an unvaccinated population that's back in school and they'll get the cases. I'm hopeful, but pessimistic that that's going to translate also into an increased number of, of hospitalizations. And I suspect that'll manifest within the next week or so.
Thank you.
Dr. Hathaway, I have one question, but before, I'd like to just say that we echo again, that we appreciate the nurses, doctors, everyone at Mission, what you're doing. And we know too, how this is wearing on your staff. It's got to be. But the question I have is, let's set COVID aside, and let's talk about the people who might have strokes, heart attacks, other illnesses. You know, I was talking to a church member of mine who's got to have elective surgery, who's had it put off now for the second time, and he can't have it now until October. But how is this taking its toll on the rest of the patients, on the rest of the community outside of COVID?
It's been, it's taken a significant toll, and it's been unfortunate. What we saw early on in the pandemic was that there was a decreased demand overall for services. People put off what they were normally, would normally do and stayed away from the hospital, much to their own detriment in many circumstances. What that did was create capacity. We had plenty of space in our health system for all the patients who needed. Even in January, while we were full, we weren't at, at or near capacity. As time has gone on, all across the state, our, our demand rose, and now we've been hit with the COVID surge on top of demand for healthcare that had already come back. And so that's put us all, every hospital in the state, at near capacity for our care. We have been able to handle it to this date, and we'll continue to handle it, and we certainly have protocols in place to care for the most critically ill and the sickest of the patients, but it, it's, it's been a challenge. We have been limited in large part by not so much physical space as staffing resources all across the board. I saw today that there's an estimated 15,000 person shortage of nurses in the state of North Carolina.
Wow.
And that creates huge demands, not just on availability of care, but demands on the people who are continuing to provide the care. They're burning out. They're, they're working hard. It's been emotionally and physically difficult for them. So while it, it may not be everything, the words of thanks and praise and what we can do to support them is certainly, certainly needed. We need more people in the workforce.
Thanks.
Dr. Hathaway, I have a question about, kind of, community-level vaccination efforts and goals. So like, like everyone else, I expect, I'm, I'm reading a lot about how states and communities and cities that have higher levels of vaccination are more likely to keep their schools open, have less hospitalizations, all the good things that, that come with high levels of vaccination, which is intuitive, I, I hope. In your experience, I guess, looking across HCA-wide, nationwide, is there kind of a minimum level of the adult population or, or community population that, that you're seeing to?
The herd immunity question, I guess.
I'm not, not quite asking about herd immunity. I don't, I'm not sure I know what that term means anymore.
I don't think any of us do.
Something close to that is what I'm asking.
Yeah, well, there's an interesting graph I just happened to see today where they plotted vaccination rates against infection rates. And while it's not perfect, it's clear that the higher the vaccination rates, the lower the, the rates of infection across communities. The more, you know, more is better. I'm, I'm worried, if you look at the way the Delta variant is progressing throughout the country, it has started unfortunately in the South, and it is marching northward, much like we see other viral illnesses, flu, measles, whatever the case may be. It has a very visible geographic spread. And I think that while some of these more northern communities, albeit they do have slightly higher vaccination rates, I think it's just a matter of time before it homogenizes and we don't see such, you know, dispersness across different states. But there is, without a doubt, higher vaccination rates are protective for your community, and masking is, is, you know, almost as effective as, as vaccinations, a little bit less so with the Delta variant than with the Alpha variant, but it's still highly, highly effective.
Thank you.
One additional comment. There were some questions about booster shots, and I think it's important to emphasize that the booster shots, you know, are widely pushed by the Biden administration as the next step, and Dr. Fauci and the CDC and others have endorsed that too. There is not definitive guidelines about who or how or what or when or where. The guidelines currently are looking at eight months after your first vaccine administration, and that's for the Pfizer vaccine. The data for Moderna has not been fully analyzed, and nobody knows exactly what to do with Johnson &amp; Johnson at this point in time. So there will be, we will work cooperatively and collaboratively. We have a, what we call our Western North Carolina Vaccine Acceleration Consortium. Stacy and I and many, many others in the 18th County region are part of that, and we'll partner to bring a plan. But that's going to be another major effort that we're going to have to be prepared for once we start giving the booster shots. To Brownie's question, I think that that's an opportunity to push that campaign, or maybe it was Jasmine's, to push the campaign for additional first doses for people when we get into the booster, booster side of it too.
Dr. Hathaway, I'll echo the thanks to you and to all of your colleagues for the frontline work you're doing. We are talking with all of our large partners in the community about vaccine policy for employees, and would like to kind of take a few moments to revisit that topic with you. I know we talked about it last time you were here. I think, you know, I think from a county perspective, certainly we are, we are trying to explore different strategies and tactics that can spur, you know, the employee numbers to rise. I'd like to hear sort of the update on the, the current policy at Mission, and then current thinking about whether Mission would join many of the other large, major health systems in the state in having a vaccine, or having a vaccine for clinical employees, which is sort of a way some people have parsed the policy to try to guard against the fear of losing non-clinical workforce as part of a mandate.
Yeah, it's, it's a, you know, I wish this was, I wish we had an hour to talk about this and not just, you know, state our positions, but really brainstorm above what the right thing for the community is. Again, as, as I've said previously, right now, we are not, we do not have a vaccine mandate in place. The reason to have one would be to keep the workforce on the job. We are seeing, right now, we have 60, give or take, employees out who have COVID of our 10,000, so it's a very small number. And I think about 40% of them actually have been vaccinated. So they're not ill, but they're out. We balance that, you know, and I don't believe that there's transmission to patients or from patient to patient within our facilities, because we have universal masking everywhere you are, and we sit six feet apart when we eat. You know, we do all kinds of preventive measures in, in the hospital. The, the, the downside, as you alluded to, is the workforce, and we're watching very, very closely in communities which we consider similar to ours, including within our own community, how that's affected their people, and whether they're leaving or not leaving. I, I, you know, if we put in a vaccine mandate and have a shortage of staff because of that, that doesn't serve the global purpose that we're all after. If we fail to do it and people get infected and they don't need to be, that's a problem. So it's a, it's a balance we talk about daily. And, you know, we just push and support each and every one of our staff members to get vaccinated as soon as they possibly can.
Are you all considering some of the steps that, you know?
Every day, every day.
Okay, well, I, I know this isn't the forum for debate, but I do think every large employer in our community has an opportunity and in some cases, a responsibility. And, you know, it's, it's just very hard to look at the recommendations around this and the choices that large hospital systems within North Carolina, serving very diverse communities, have made, and understand, understand why Mission's not going there. I hope that you all in continued discussions will make the decision to, to make that.
We'll, we'll talk very closely with our staff and get their opinions. We'll talk with the union. That's not a trivial consideration, and we'll put it together and try to make the best plan for everybody.
I appreciate that.
We appreciate your, that viewpoint and your support on this.
So commissioners, obviously, this is a really important conversation, and I don't, I don't want to curtail it. We do, but I also just want to acknowledge the other items on our agenda too, which, so we're either going to need to maybe, maybe schedule some additional time for them, or we're going to need to move on to them. So I just wanted to say that if there's other things people really want to get out on this, there's, there's nothing more important going on in the community right now, so I don't want to cut this off. But I just want to acknowledge we're a little behind in our agenda, so.
I did have a resolution related to vaccinations and COVID. I was hoping to, to read to the board, and I'm happy to do that now, or I can do that during the open discussion portion at the end, if there's time or?
Why don't you go ahead and do it now? And, because I think we should just try to go ahead and complete anything else that's on this, because I don't, I don't think we have anything else under open discussion, so let's just go ahead and, and do it now if you'd like to do that.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I put together a resolution, which is a collection of thoughts related to imploring employers across the community to consider various vaccination incentives and mandates, and also kind of calling out three important public institutions specifically. And I'll just, I'll just read it quickly and, and then stop talking.
Okay. And just, and just for clarification on the process, your commissioner, so you're not asking for the commission to act on any of this today? It's just something you wanted to share sort of for future, future thinking of the commission?
Perhaps too formal, food for thought, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So starting with the whereas is, all the coronavirus vaccines currently in the U.S. have proven to be safe and effective with over 200 million individuals receiving a shot. The vaccines are remarkably effective at protecting both the individual and the broader community through reductions of transmission and hospitalizations. On August 23rd, 2021, the FDA gave full approval for the Pfizer vaccine, whereas it is the civic and moral responsibility of every adult to protect children who are not yet vaccinated against COVID-19, as well as the responsibility of, of medical personnel to protect vulnerable their patients, the community, and themselves through vaccination. Whereas the American Hospital Association, American Medical Association, and the American Nurses Association supports vaccination mandates of various forms for employees and medical personnel. Also whereas on August 12th, 2021, the National Educators Association announced support for educators to receive the COVID-19 vaccine or submit to regular testing. Also whereas a recent survey from William Willis Towers Watson found that 52% and growing of U.S. employers will have a vaccine requirement in place by the fourth quarter of this year, which is a dramatic increase from the current 21% of employers in the United States. Now therefore, yet resolved, the Board of Commissioners for the County of Buncombe, the following three items. That the Board of Commissioners hereby request Mission Hospital executives identify, or immediately identify their staff and contract, and contract staff who are not yet vaccinated and implement the vaccination requirement within the next month. And the same goes, each of these are identical, for Asheville City Schools and for Buncombe County Schools faculty and staff as well. There's just a couple of things, you know, this is a draft, these are my thoughts. Couple of things I'd like to see added, which is a simple, you know, item at the end, which would implore, implore all employees to do, to follow suit. I'd also consider adding Asheville-Buncombe Technical Community College to this list. And I just say, I'll just describe my intent, which is, you know, not to, not to force anyone to do anything in terms of employers, nor is my intent to define for people what the definition of a vaccine mandate is. That comes in very many different forms. There are different various items and incentives, carrots and sticks that people can use. My, my intent here is to tell and to ask certain employers that now is the time to try things to incentivize their employees to do this. So that's that.
All right, Commissioner Sloan, thank you. And I think I'll just take the last word and just say, you know, thank you all again for being here. Thanks for what everyone's doing. And I also wanted to say thanks to the county manager for the updates we've been receiving about, because this, these are issues that we're wrestling with in our organization too. We're a large employer as well. I think that our numbers show that we do have a, you know, we're probably doing relatively well on the vaccination rates compared to community as, as a whole. So thank you, everyone who's helping to meet those goals. But our numbers aren't where we want them to be either. So we appreciate the strategies that staff have developed to help continue to ramp that up and the updates on that. And, you know, my, my sense is that I hope, and I hope that they, you know, they continue to move people. And I think, I think getting the numbers up is, is really, we have to do that. I hope the current efforts are successful in getting us there or very close to there. If they, if they aren't, I think we're also going to, as an organization, have to consider other, other policies, you know, around, around how we continue to get something closer to universal vaccinations as well. So, but I, I wanted to say thanks for all the work that's going into that and, and some of the promising results that we're, we're seeing some, from some of the new initiatives.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Yes, ma'am.
I would want the board to consider at the five o'clock meeting, a discussion on the incentive program.
Okay.
If you can say yes or no, how much money you want us to set aside. You don't have to do a budget amendment, but some guidance that you want to put that in place would be helpful.
Okay, so let's, let's, we'll add that. If there's no objections, to at least have some discussion around that for new business. Okay, and that sounds, that sounds great, Avril. All right, commissioners, we do need to move on. So let's, let's go ahead and move to the next item, which is an update on the solar RFP process.
Good afternoon, Chairman Newman and commissioners. I understand you guys have a lot on your agenda, and I know the ferry road property is on this agenda too, and that's going to be a time-consuming and important topic. So I'm going to get through this as quickly as I can for you. It's really just an update on where we're at with our solar projects. Ongoing solar projects, as you know, the county approved an aggregated solar RFP several months back. Happy to say that we're actually finally getting panels on roofs, which is very exciting for me. It's been a long process. I know, Commissioner Wells, you got a chance to go out to Lester Library and see those panels, those beautiful shining panels. So I'm just very happy to report that we are boots on ground and installation is actually happening now. It's very exciting. We've got the first bundle of projects going. We have had, just full disclosure, the, the global supply chain issues that are happening to everybody else, everybody else are happening to us as well. So we've had some delays in shipping and things of that nature, but nothing that's derailed us too much, just slowed us down a few weeks. But we're doing pretty well, and construction's moving forward. Bundle one, which is just the flush-mounted systems, is on the ground, and bundle two is our ballasted like-flat roof systems, ready to go in October. Just as a reminder, there's 39 total projects, so a lot of work to do. It's 18 to 20, 24-month, like, total construction time. We do have a couple of upcoming projects as well to add to that group. As if we don't have enough going on already, we're going to add some more to the list. East Asheville Library and our Public Safety Firing Range are, those are already in our CIP for this current year. So we'll be, we'll be bidding those out hopefully here in the, in, in the next few weeks, honestly. We do have some additional agencies that are jumping on board with us this time as well. Not nearly the scale of what we did last time, but Black Mountain has a, has a project, UNCA has a project, City of Asheville has a project, and we're going to be bidding those out together. And so the board should expect to see an MOU with those agencies on the consent agenda here in the coming weeks. Our utility scale development is going really well. The construction of that five-megawatt landfill project in Woodfin is finally underway. Three years in the making, it's finally actually happening, which is, again, very exciting for me. But we're also looking at opportunities for additional utility scale development. It's a challenging thing in western North Carolina, given our topography, but we have conducted some initial interviews with some utility-scale developers in North Carolina, and we're planning on releasing a request for information with the intent of sort of now formalizing so those discussions to see if we can't potentially collaborate with one of these developments. those discussions to see if we can't potentially collaborate with one of these developers on an additional utility scale project, which will obviously move us much further down the road towards reaching our goals, in terms of reaching our 100% renewable goals. Rooftop solar is great, but in terms of moving the needle, the utility scale stuff is really just a huge, huge part of how we're going to meet those challenging goals that we have. And that is it. I told you I could get through it fast, so I'm happy to answer any questions you have, Or I can just leave right now.
What's the estimated completion time on the old landfill project?
Six to eight months is what they've told me, but that is, of course, very dependent on things like weather, which has not cooperated lately. But six to eight-month timeline from start to finish, and they have started construction.
Cool. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
All right. I will bite my tongue. I have many questions, but we are way behind, so I'm just going to hold them all. So, all right, next item on the agenda is emergency paid sick leave update. And Sharon Burks, can you help us with this item?
I'm actually smiling, even though you can't see it. All right, so today I'm coming before you to discuss the emergency paid sick leave. And I just want a second here. So, and with some recommendations for you to consider. So, starting off, and Stacy did a great job on discussing what the CDC guidelines are for our employees right now. So, for those employees that are fully vaccinated, they are not required, if they have close contact, to quarantine, as long as they don't have any symptoms. If they don't have any symptoms, we ask them to wear a mask and they can continue to go to work. They do need to get tested between three and five days after they had their close contact. And again, it's monitoring for symptoms. If our employees are unvaccinated, they are required to quarantine, and as up to as many as 14 days. So, OSHA and CDC do have different requirements. OSHA's five to seven, CDC's up to 14. If you are in the Sheriff's Department or if you're in some of the Health and Human Service positions, the 14 days are what the requirement is. And I'm saying that because as we start looking at the policy, I have some questions on equitably. So, the current policy, if you recall, back in February, I came to you asking for us to look at extending what the federal government had offered under FF-CRA. And what that was, was to provide employees with time to either quarantine or stay home if they were to become sick with COVID. So, part of that policy was extending their sick leave, and we did not grant them any additional hours. So, under the FF-CRA, they received 80 hours through the federal government, and what we did was we just let it roll. Many of our employees were not using those hours, so it just, it made sense. We also instituted a quarantine benefit, and when we did that, it was, the majority of our folks, it was before vaccines came into play, and so we wanted to make sure that the employees who were not able to get vaccinated but were required to be in close contact with potentially people who are COVID-positive, that they weren't harmed. So, now we push forward to today, and again, those were just a few folks. Those were the EMTs, patrol deputies, detention officers, scale house attendants, and then any of those working in the VAC centers. There was some leeway for me to make some exceptions, and to this date, I have not made any exceptions for any positions because none have been asked. Most of our employees have been able to quarantine by simply doing their work at home, so they'd never even had to use the time. So, one of the things that we, in looking at this data, what we're finding is this policy is not equitable for all. So, if you have, and it's about 76, 77% of our employees are vaccinated, so those folks would not be eligible for any quarantine benefit. So, what we're asking is that we remove the quarantine benefit, however, we do reset all employees to 80 hours. So, those that work in positions that they can't necessarily quarantine and work from home, they still have a benefit that's available to them. And we also ask is, you know, we're hoping that sooner or later, COVID will end, but until that, rather than us having to continue to come back and ask for an extension, that you give the county manager discretion to extend those 80 hours if COVID continues and people are using up those 80 hours. So, for the next step, because we are changing a policy, we'd need to bring this back to you for a public hearing on September 21st, and I ask if you have any questions that I might be able to answer for you or recommendations.
I think it is a better policy, so I appreciate that. Honestly, the only question, I guess, that arises for me, and this kind of goes into this kind of, you know, I think the kind of questions we're going to have to think about for the future, right? I think we've had a very generous policy around these kinds of issues throughout the pandemic, as well we should, but for staff who make the irresponsible decision to not get vaccinated, I question whether we can, you know, continue to provide those kind of policies in the future. I think people who take responsibility, take steps to protect themselves, not spread this, you know, I think it makes all the sense in the world, but it is a question, I think, is a reasonable one to ask. I think this is a better policy than what we have today, so I had to choose between the two. I would support it, but I just, I do feel, I feel like I wanted to just share that concern and question. Any others? All right, thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
Next up, Ferry Road work session, and I know we have not as much time as we have allocated left on the agenda for this, so, all right, the 30 minutes. So, Tim Love, thank you for being here.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This afternoon, we're going to talk about Ferry Road. This is the first of two presentations on this topic, so you'll get a chance to talk about it some more. But on March 2020, this Board approved a three-phase contract with the agreement that we would be back after Phase One to review the initial results and then make a determination whether or not you wanted to proceed into Phases Two and Three. So, not asking for a decision today, this is the first presentation, but when we come back in 14 days, on the 21st, we would be looking for a green light or a red light, do you want to keep on going? So, with that said, many of you know, but for the benefit of the public, this site is Buncombe County-owned, was initially slated for economic development purposes, the famous Deschutes Project, and later residential purposes, but both of those projects have fallen through. That said, this Board asked us to take a look at this property and see what's possible. And when we say what's possible, what can we do with this almost 200-acre parcel that can meet community needs? And so, that's what we've done, and that's what brings us today. So, we contracted with Equinox, and today we've got Kim Williams here with us, who is our project manager, so she'll be able to walk us through the details, but what I want you to hear from me and from Kim and for the benefit of the public is, this study stresses key aspects that are important, they're evidenced in the Buncombe County Strategic Plan, but you talk about them in every meeting. And so, there's specific things I wanted to make sure the public was aware of. So, when we start this project, number one consideration was how do we conserve the property to the best extent possible? Additionally, how do we look at environmental impacts on the property so that we don't harm the property in terms of what we're trying to accomplish? A major aspect of this project was to look at affordable housing and workforce housing specifically, so those are aspects you'll see in each scenario. And finally, to look at ways to leverage the location of the property, its proximity to the French Broad River, the Blue Ridge Parkway, other things, to make this a destination for outdoor recreation and sort of preserve the site as is. So, with that said, I'm going to invite Kim to come present, and she will walk us through those scenarios that have been developed, as well as the environmental impact assessment, but we'll let Kim take it from here.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I would like to say thank you for allowing us to work on this project. Equinox is based out of Asheville. Our President David Tuck senses regrescity, can't be here, but both David and I feel like this is a very important project and really sets the tone for how development, the future of development in the county works and kind of sets a model, a shiny example of what development can look like. We could also do this without our team members, several of which are also local firms. So, we started out this project by looking at vision of the site. What do we envision for the future of the site? We will eventually get a little more into public and stakeholder engagement, but much of this vision was set by the county's strategic plan and by leaders within county staff. So, the vision is that it is inclusive and affordable community, it's inspired by nature, it incorporates recreation, it has equitable transportation, and it's a contributor to the economy. So, that's a lot of things for one little site to accomplish, but I think there's several avenues how we can pursue that. As part of the visioning, we also set goals, the leadership team, which is made up of different staff members. And so, these are the different goals. Host a diverse live-work-play and aging in-place community. Provide inclusive and affordable housing. Increase a well-paid living wage workforce by hosting commercial or specialized manufacturing employers. We know this one might be a little more challenging for the site, so each one of the scenarios we're going to show you today is going to, in some way, incorporate these, but might not meet all these goals equally. Be a model for sustainability and stewardship. Be a hub and connector for diverse recreation opportunities. Provide equitable transportation and inspire opportunity for partnership. And I think in the next few phases is when we'll really explore those ideas for opportunity for partnership. We also defined some metrics. Because I need to be brief today, I'll cut some of these slides out, but we did define metrics for each of the goals, so we can check these throughout the life of the project and see how they meet up with what we want to do. A little bit about the context of the site. It is a 137-acre property located at the gateway and hub of one of the biggest recreation areas in western North Carolina. So, Gateway to Pisgah National Forest, the Arboretum. Importantly, there's a new employment hub and training center being developed right across the river, and a regional greenway is proposed as part of the Hellbender system to connect to the site. Here's a little more detailed look at that regional greenway, and it's just shown diagrammatically, and also the new bridge that is currently being constructed south of the site. An important part of the step of this planning process, and this is something that our firm, Equinox specializes in, is an environmental assessment. We do this at any scale, from a five-acre property to a 5,000-acre property. We think it's really important to define site sustainability. So, we looked at a lot of different layers, and I will probably be more brief on these layers, but they represent everything from hydrology to wetlands to floodplain to threaten endangered species. We worked with our ecologists to identify a lot of these priorities, and we synthesized all this information together to identify three different zones for conservation. And the remainder outside of those conservation zones are the more developable areas. So, you'll see three color codes, green being the darkest, and then the gradients, which I'll get into. So, for critical conservation, these are areas where we are recommending, we do not develop in these areas. These areas are off-limits, probably most likely because you'll have to do a lot of permitting impacts, but also the environmental impacts they'll have. So, it's watercourses and wetlands buffered by 30 feet and unique natural areas, which are, you know, cliffs, wetlands, stuff like that. It is a special site in that sense. Primary zones, we're recommending to try to minimize or exclude impacts. If there's any impact, really low-impact development and best practices should occur. It's buffering hydrology by 100 feet, steep slopes as well. And then the secondary zone, there may potentially need to be impacts to these zones, but this is where low-impact development really can occur. And this is a variety of other layers that we looked at, including a statewide layer that looks at, you know, compared to the rest of the state, how important is this site? And there was some importance, but it does overlap some of the zones that we've already The other thing we looked at through the help of Traffic Planning and Design, who was our traffic engineer, is three access areas as potential options. So, I'm going to go through each of those. The southern access option looks at accessing from Bent Creek Branch Road, and this would be at an existing signal. So, NCDOT does like this option, as it's already a controlled access point. It goes through a private property into the site, but we have worked with landowners already on these three options to determine if they're a no-go situation, and we continue to think that all of these three options are viable. The option B, ferry road one-way option, would convert dry ferry road to one-way, allowing for more vehicle capacity. And then, option C would look at actually creating a new access point and really streamlining the curvature of the roadway to make it better for vehicles. So, we have met with NCDOT, again, the landowners, and we feel like all these options are currently viable and could be explored in future phases. We have identified what does it mean for site sustainability, and each of these different scenarios we'll introduce should incorporate in some way these options. So, once we looked at what are the areas to conserve, we looked at what are the areas to build. And these are generally the flatter areas. I also want to mention, everything that we're proposing that's higher level of development suitability is in the brown tan, and we're looking at about 46, 50 acres of developable area, and the remaining 65 acres, potential conservation area, very low-impact development. We also noted that there's a lot of sound and noise near I-26, so not the most suitable place to have, if you have, you know, home sites immediately adjacent. So, now we're going to get to the scenarios. So, we looked at five different scenarios, and we looked at site sustainability as part of that. In these five options, we start out with option A being a lower-density scenario and utilizing more of that conservation area, all the way to Concept E, that is a higher impact in the sense that there'll be more square footage of development and impervious surfaces. For each of these different scenarios, we looked at the goals and have a sliding scale of how these goals work, so we can talk you through each of those. So, for Concept A, we're really looking at Concept A as a recreation-based community. It's centered around nature and it has a higher level of conservation area, but it does have a single-family and the missing middle. And I'll explain, the missing middle is, you know, prior to the 1950s, there was a lot of these housing types built. They were condos, townhomes, fourplexes, duplexes. You don't see that missing-middle housing style much anymore, so trying to reintegrate that, because that is an affordable housing aspect, so we identified that specifically for each of these scenarios. We also include in this scenario urban and multifamily, so those are apartment complexes, and a bit of commercial and/or specialized industrial. One thing we have heard is there's a need for especially outdoor retailers and manufacturers to need smaller-scale spaces like 10,000 to 40,000 square feet. So, in some cases, there could be some type of recreation-based or light industrial on this site in this scenario. For this reason, we do have some job creation as part of this. So, when you're looking at the goals and the sliding scale, you're high on the sustainability because you're able to conserve a lot of land, but lower on the workforce generation. So, we'll just go through each of those. This is an example of some of the missing-middle housing types that you can see, as well as, for most of these options and scenarios, we propose pocket parks or other things to help create community. But for this concept, there are smaller pocket parks and then lots of open space, conserve space. Every scenario would have a greenway. It may vary in each scenario, but a greenway that connects as part of the larger regional greenway. And in this scenario, probably a higher level of something like natural surface rails could be an option. So, in the pink, we show that's where the light specialized industrial could go or commercial. And everything in yellow is single-family housing, so for each of these scenarios, these ridgelines are really where development is best to occur. And some form of multifamily in the brown. And some form of multifamily in the brown. In concept B, it's more of your traditional neighborhood development. And there's emphasis maybe on smaller lot sizes and smaller building sizes so that you can get more single-family homes packed in together. And it's really an emphasis on homeownership in this, because we do not include multifamily housing in this scenario. So you do have the single-family and the missing middle and a little bit of increase in commercial. So this is really emphasis on those two styles that are about home ownership. And again, affordable housing and equitable transportation access are some of the higher metrics and goals that are being met in this one. And here's some example of smaller housing with smaller footprints, and also your missing middle duplexes and townhomes. And then that small commercial that we referenced, and this commercial really would be to serve the local community. So it would be a coffee shop or other things like that, a daycare center. So you see in the yellow, again, a single-family, but you have, beginning to have a central core that is that traditional neighborhood core where commercial kind of serves as a community hub. And your pocket parks that are on the ridges that have some really great views of the river. The next concept is a mixed-use village center concept. And it's a small-scale live-work-play, and things are more distributed across the different land use types. So you do have single-family and missing middle about the same, but you've really increased your multifamily housing and also as well as commercial. So opportunity for affordable housing, when density increases, of course, affordable housing increases. There's still opportunity for pocket parks, but maybe smaller-scale parks and conserve space. This is an example of a village center, so it could be, you know, just a couple stories, two to three stories, could be mixed-use, but having a nice central space in the middle with, again, the missing middle surrounding that central space. And here we are with the red being the commercial, so that's kind of your center with a plaza space, with your missing middle, everything is in the orange, and then your single-family in the yellow. Concept D is the second to last, and this is increasing the density even higher. So think of town centers or places where you're going to see commercial on the bottom and multi-stores on the top. So that's really going to increase multifamily units. There's more opportunity as well for this in the missing middle, but in this concept, that's more of the village-town center concept, we don't have single-family housing. And so that increases commercial and also job creation and affordable housing. So again, those metrics go up just because you're able to increase density, which increases affordable housing and availability for commercial and job creation. And these are examples more of a central plaza you could have for this higher-density town center. And the town center, mixed-use areas would be the areas in brown with the red stripes, and the green area with the big asterisk would be the central plaza. Lastly, concept E is a small commercial or business park. This is really focusing on two types. It's commercial and industrial, light manufacturing. We do include some middle, missing middle, so there are some areas in the outer edge that would incorporate that. But largely, this is about job creation, and the metrics for that go higher. It's less about maybe conserving open space and recreation aspects. But we do show some missing middle here, and having still some potential, you know, industrial that does have a commercial front, like a brewery or other types of manufacturers that do want a commercial front. And the dark purple represents those higher, bigger square footage for industrial and light manufacturing. The lighter purple is the smaller footprints, and then, again, the orange is the missing middle. So we have side-by-side comparisons, and we can talk through these maybe if you have questions. But I want to emphasize again that it's really about, concepts A through C are about smaller neighborhood villages and increasing single-family and multifamily housing. And concept Ds and Es are really increasing commercial and jobs, you know, chances for jobs and chances for businesses to come in. We did analyze the open space, and the open space category is really more formalized public park space or plazas. So you see it decrease when you're going towards the business park concept. But for affordable housing, the big reason why the increase occurs is just because you're having a huge density increase with multifamily housing. So with that, we can go through any questions. We are going to ask for some discussion today about some of these concepts, and we can toggle back to the five concepts, so you can just see them overall. So any questions before we get into that?
Don't see any.
I've got one. I don't know when to ask this, because this is the best time, because there's a lot of, you know, there's so much to consider and talk about. But a couple of these designs you've shown in the map or mentioned in passing, there's kind of that bog in the northeast that's along the French Broad, the natural future that needs protection. You also suggested there might be a place for, kind of in the southwest corner of the property, that there might be a water access point of some kind. And I guess I'd just love to hear your thoughts more about what you think might be best for those two areas, how you envision this in terms of access to the public, and just kind of interacting with the French Broad. Because I don't know what I even think about it, and I just wanted to hear what you think.
Sure. If I can, go back to one of the maps, I can explain those areas again. That has been an interesting conversation to have with each of these scenarios, is who is the recreation and the nature of space for? Is it for the public, or is it for the community that will live there? And I think in different scenarios, it would make sense for it to be more private versus public. That being said, use of the greenway and seeing the open space and seeing the river would be for the public, for everyone. It has been asked that we consider in every situation and every scenario that we have a blueway access point. What that will look like has to be determined. It is a fairly constrained site, so it's not going to be your biggest blueway access in the whole system. Let me go back to that map. So what was referenced is in the southeast corner is a huge wetland complex, and that's that critical conservation zone. So we're not proposing anything other than maybe like a boardwalk system or something like that. So I think it's really dependent on the community in the county of what level of investment you want to have to get the public down to that space, because it will take some investment. And then the same thing for the blueway access. If we go into the next phase, we will explore in a little more detail, like how big does that parking look like? If we can't get a ton of people down there, there's a way to get them still accessed to the blueway in another way. So the hope is to really utilize maybe the main part of the site for recreation, but get people to explore from that main part. So there's different options we're exploring.
Thank you.
I don't think there's any other questions right now. So if you would have, you're looking for some feedback.
Yeah.
So bring the questions for us.
Sure. I'll have Tim come back up here, and I think one of the main things we want to discuss with you is if you lean towards certain scenarios, if we do move to the next phase, there's three scenarios that we want to try to drill down to. So if you want to have a quick discussion, I don't know how much time we have left, about what are you thinking? And it may not just be a scenario, but a land use type that you really want to make sure gets into the final planning process. So how much time do we have for this?
We have 15 minutes.
I guess I'll just ask if anyone has a comment on any scenario that they don't prefer, or they really do prefer.
Thanks. This is a great presentation. It's exciting to see this. For me, B, C, and D really rise to the top, particularly C and D within that mix. Or I'm sorry, B, wait, particularly B and C, excuse me. Just with the, you know, really seeing this as an opportunity to be a major driver in some of our strategies around expanding access to affordable housing. I'd also, as we move forward in conversations, be excited to hear ideas around more about sort of what that retail-commercial space might look like, and also whether there sort of are some public benefit or public good projects we could envision within those spaces, perhaps a large early childhood education center, health clinics, whether any of our community partners have ideas about that piece. So just to kick us off, that's sort of where my initial thoughts are.
You know, want to go next?
Anybody want to? I feel like I'm always talking.
Go ahead, Parker.
The missing middle is my favorite part about all of this. Not just because it might provide housing for workforce housing, but because of the housing types you're suggesting, the duplexes, the multiplexes, townhomes, whatever you want to call it, that kind of gentle density, I think, is missing in our community. It's one of the biggest mistakes we've made as a society since World War II, is not building that kind of housing stock. I think it's fantastic, and I would love to build a lot of that in this community and here. And that made me really excited about the comprehensive plan and thinking more about that with you. So, thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. This is really exciting to see, especially as a member of the Affordable Housing Subcommittee. And Commissioner Sloan, I think you're, I think maybe I've rubbed off on you, the missing middle, that seems to be my favorite.
You did. You mentioned that earlier.
... as well.
Yeah.
So B and C also resonate very highly with me, particularly looking to, you know, as we go through and look at, is there an opportunity to increase what we're doing in terms of the missing middle? And I'll reiterate what I said in our previous meeting with Commissioner Sloan and Chairman Newman, is if we really do want to dig in and look at building generational wealth for folks who have not had that opportunity and looking at that through that lens of equity, the missing middle, the townhomes, the duplexes, I think is a great place for us to look at that. I think there's just an exorbitant amount of opportunity for us as we look at not only our affordable housing goals, but other goals that we've set forth to meet by 2025. So I'm pretty, really excited about what's ahead of us. So thank you for your work. This is really terrific.
So if I had to pick a scenario, I would say it's somewhere between C and D. The, you know, at a high level, when I think about the property, I think it's, I think it's like this really amazing place. Like, it's really beautiful. So much frontage on the French Broad River. Forest is beautiful. So the main things that I would hope we can get out of this is to make a significant contribution towards the creation of affordable housing in Buncombe County, which is this urgent need. We already own this land, right? And land is, we were just talking about in our Affordable Housing Committee meeting, it's one of the biggest limiting factors on what we can do. We don't have a lot of buildable land, and it's very expensive. So the fact that we already own this land, it's paid for, and there, you know, there's a lot of places here we don't want to build on, but there are some good sites. So when we think about the buildable part of the property, the reasons I kind of think more about C and D is I want to get as much, I mean, a big part of me is like, just leave this place alone. Just build trails and just leave it alone. Like, that scenario actually has a lot of appeal to me, too. We didn't have affordable housing crisis. That's exactly what I would want to do there. But we do have an affordable housing crisis, and so if we're going to, you know, identify 30 to 40 acres of land that we're going to develop, to me, I want to get as much affordable housing value out of that land that's going to be converted from natural to developed as possible. So for that reason, doing like a big, single-family subdivision, I wouldn't support that because I think it's, we would develop a lot of land that, all things being equal, I'd prefer to just leave undeveloped, and you don't really get that much out of it, you know, in terms of the number of units. So I think of this more as like, kind of this like preserve where we ought to try to sort of strategically drop some pretty high-density, like some fairly intense, dense development, but on the very, on the smallest possible footprint of the property. So for those reasons, I kind of favor some higher-density multifamily housing, which will also qualify for the 4% affordable housing tax credit programs. If we do a lot of small units, it would be very attractive there, but I think that the subsidy that would be required to make them affordable would be extremely high if we're going to do that at large scale. So for those reasons, I'm kind of drawn more to those elements of D. So anyway, those are a few of my high-level thoughts. Thanks for asking.
If I can interject real quick, one thing I didn't mention is we base affordable housing on a 20% of all units kind of guesswork, that that could be what it is. And that was just a target we based on. The city of Asheville did current, recent studies with some of their properties and based it on that. That being said, if we go into future phases and you want to adjust that amount, then that can be done. But we just set that as kind of a bar.
So I would advocate for more. I mean, I just think there's just, there's just like so few opportunities like this. If we had 10 of these, that might be fine, but like, we were talking in the meetings today about, you know, wide range of different goals for affordable housing, but, you know, all of them involve, like, we're not meeting nearly enough, right? The market is just not naturally producing this need for this big part of our workforce. So we need hundreds and really thousands of units to be built over the next few years. So for those reasons, I mean, we don't have another piece of property like this. I would advocate for, again, trying to kind of get as far down the road on that as possible. Well, definitely mixed, but a different ratio. I mean, just the markets, I mean, there's no shortage of just developments happening. Like, that's not what I would want to see here. Okay, I'm done.
So I'll just say, first of all, thank you for the detail that you've done in this. It's really very phenomenal. And I went out there and walked the property, I guess it was last weekend, just to kind of, I wanted to see it, because it's one thing to see it on a map, but actually to walk it and everything. And that is one of the things that I think is really important to balance, is just what you're trying to do here, that stewardship of that piece of property, as well as meet these goals that we're talking about. And I guess, while I understand what Commissioner Newman's saying, and we definitely have affordable housing, partly, I just wonder like the capacity of that land to really hold that much housing, too, when you walk it, would be one of my concerns about, you know, how much you would do on that. But I do believe that kind of the mixed, I definitely am also very supportive of the missing middle, as well as the homeownership. I do feel like homeownership is something we should be looking at with this, and I very much favor the ones that include that within them. And I am intrigued with the, having some type of the commercial within there, too, because I think about, you know, we want this workforce housing, this homeownership, and for people to be able, some to be able to potentially work there in that neighborhood. So I actually thought the recreational aspect of that, you know, no matter which of the scenarios it went with, but it does seem to be that there is this desire to have more of that kind of recreational, commercial space to pull in those type of businesses, which really are very appealing to entrepreneurs and to young families and to really have a vital community. So I appreciate the work, and I'm curious to see, hear what others have to say and how this proceeds.
Right.
Just want to ask a question that's curious.
Any commissioners haven't spoken?
Oh, sorry, yeah, go ahead.
So Al or Robert, you want to chime in?
Well, one thing I have to agree with Commissioner Whale is what is it capable? I don't think there's as much usable land there as we think, because I grew up there and I've walked up for many a years. And, you know, I look at C, D, and E, a little of each, but I don't think there's enough to do any, any one of these projects of what this land is really suited for. I know I was the one that said, I think we just need to look at Phase 1 and save the money, because this is valuable land. But now I think we need to go into one more, you know, study and let someone really bring us back more than what we have right now. And I know cost, you know, that's going to be my biggest thing, is what is this going to cost county? Because, yes, we don't have a lot of money in this land, but it is worth a lot of money. And we need to make sure we do. I don't want to let this land just sit still. There is something we can do with a third of it, a half of it, or the majority of it. So right now, I'm just, I'm leaning of C, D, and E, of putting together...
You know, for me, I think it's a goal of opportunity, but going into it, I didn't. But, you know, if you had asked me sixty days ago, I'd say, sell it and let's move on.
Al, can you put the left foot?
Oh, I'm sorry. If you had asked me sixty days ago, I would have said, sell it and let's move on, you know? But when you look at it, and you look at what we can do for affordable housing, and what we can do in the county to really set an example here, this is something I want to see. And I agree with what's being said. I think the city is selling themselves short in this 20%. I think we can do more than that, because we need, when you look at equity and affordable housing, that's critical. We need to make sure that we look at more than 20% in whatever we do. But I want to see us go to Phase Two, so we can look at it more. I mean, we've got some good examples here, but I'm not that soul on either one yet or ready to say which way to go. But I do lean more to housing and that's missing middle than I do on the commercial side. You know, we can, when I look at commercial, I think more of what we need for the community, like childcare, somebody mentioned a clinic. These are the things I'd like to see, you know, in that community. But that's something we can look at more, you know? Like I said, I agree with Robert there, I want to see us move to the next phase, so we can get more information, you know, more.
Okay. We're almost out of time, but real quick, you have a question, Parker?
No, I'll ask offline, it's fine.
Okay. Any, yeah, go ahead.
Super, super quick, one thing I wanted to say is, really interesting seeing workforce housing options as we move forward in the conversations. Thanks.
We were going to address next steps, do we have time to do that real quick?
Real quick.
Okay. We will be taking this to your next meeting and ask you to actually talk about three scenarios that you want to move forward with. So the end of the plan would include three different scenarios, and if I can go to the next step slide real quick at the very end. As part of the next two phases, the next phase would really be about the community's stakeholder input, so that's a critical part. They would weigh in on the six different scenarios, but with the idea that the three scenarios are probably the most preferred, and get their feedback, opportunities for partnerships. And then, from there, we would refine those scenarios a lot more. So Commissioner Presley, you're concerned about the buildability. We'll have engineers and landscape architects and others, urban designers, actually working on detailed maps to figure out if it's truly buildable and getting that footprint right for each of those buildings. So, from there, Phase Three will really get into cost estimates and phasing, and we will be able to wrap up with handing off you a plan with a very buildable plan set of, here's three scenarios, here's how to build them, here's potential cost.
All right.
Thank you.
Great job summarizing in less time than you were supposed to have. So thank you, you did a great job, and we all appreciate the work on the plan. It's very helpful in terms of thinking about the future here. All right, Commissioners, let's take a short break, maybe five minutes, and we'll get started with the regular meeting.